That's true.
Cell phones, guys, if you'd put them on vibrate. Um, do we have a?
The board included.
Yeah, do we have a thing to read off?
We have a quorum.
Yes.
There you go, bud.
I'm going to vibrate mode here for a second.
Cool.
Can't trust my kids at work or anybody.
It being after?
Being 7:00 P.M.
Take two. It being 7:00 P.M., the Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hear the continued petition of Abington Investments LLC, 245 Central Street, Abington, for a comprehensive permit under MGL Chapter 40B for relief from the following. 175-21 A and J uses, 175-29 dimensional and density regulations, 175-43A 1A, 175-432A, 175-50B and C, 175-52G parking and loading requirements, 175-31, 175-32 A, B, C, D, E, multifamily use, 175-34 earth removal, 175-37 transit-oriented development, 175-666 Buffer Street Strip, excuse me, 175-67 dot one, outdoor lighting for 144 rental units known as Abington Senior Housing at 1015 Plymouth Street. Property located on assessors map 17 and 18, lots 23 and 6 in the R30 zone.
Okay, um, Amy's here, right here, all right, Tetra Tech's here, excellent. Do you want to start off?
Absolutely. I'll go here because Sean will inevitably. Again, for the record, Dan Bailey for Abington Investments, our engineer Sean Arden with us. My expectation, I think, subject to the board's, the board wants to handle it, but we have a Tetra Tech letter dated October 31st, 2018, as revised through March 28th, 2019. There are some remaining items that need to be discussed under that letter. We think that they can be resolved, and I think maybe the best way to do it is just march through the letter.
Okay.
So Sean, I don't know which Sean wants to start. It's your letter, Sean, so Sean Reardon, so maybe you can start.
Yeah, so I think this is all, this is sort of consolidated down into a?
Well, like?
No, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, Sean Reardon, Tetra Tech, the board's consulting engineer. So one of the first remaining items is the discussion regarding the width of the roadway.
Right.
So I think at the latest plan, the proposal is to stay with a 22-foot curb-to-curb dimension, a four-foot sidewalk, a one-foot offset on one side to a guardrail, and then a guardrail behind the sidewalk. So the total width would be 25 feet from face of guardrail to face of guardrail. Is that about right? No, I'm sorry, 27 feet.
This is a sidewalk, yeah, 27.
27 feet. So just for reference, the street that you come in on is 26 feet curb-to-curb. That's the standard subdivision collector road, no, I'm sorry, minor road cross-section in Abington. Outside has an added benefit of a grass shoulder than a guardrail. So there's, in addition to the 26 feet, there's a four- or five-foot grass shoulder than a guardrail, then a sidewalk on the other side. So just for frame of reference, if you care to just take a look out there, know that the roadway here, which is about 550 feet, is four feet narrower than the roadway out there, with only a foot of offset to the guardrail on the non-sidewalk side. So our concern is basically is it's narrow, it's potentially uncomfortable. To Attorney Bailey's point, you know, 22 feet normally, it's more than enough room for two cars to get by each other. It's a straight shot, so not terribly concerned about accidents or anything like that. It's more of just a long, narrow roadway that if it could be wider, would certainly prefer it to be.
Now, can I ask you about the sidewalk, being four feet? Is that acceptable?
Yeah.
Is it acceptable to wheelchairs or any type of activity going on?
Yep, so in this case, this case it's pretty straight, there's no real noticeable grade change. The, I think it's 32 inches is the minimum, so that you need in terms of clear, so four feet is more than enough room for two pedestrians or two wheelchairs to pass each other. Certainly wouldn't go any narrower than that, but four feet is common.
I see a lot of people out with motorized wheelchairs going through towns now.
Yeah, I mean, it's part of the overall discussion. You know, certainly five feet is not by any means outrageous. Dan and I have a project where the town required seven feet where it was adjacent to parking. That was because of bumper overhang, but, you know, four to five feet is pretty customary. Our concern is just the overall narrowness of the roadway and how long it is.
All right. And our response to that is, we did look at it, and Sean can give you the details, but what we're balancing is we're in a wetland, and if we go over 5,000 square feet of fill, we're in a very different place in terms of permitting. It gets very difficult to permit more than 5,000 square feet, to be blunt, of wetlands filling. So we're trying to make it as wide as we can, but stay under 5,000 square feet.
To that point, Dan, wouldn't this qualify as a limited project, allowing you to not count the wetland fill on the access road against the 5,000 square feet?
I mean, yeah, but I really didn't, you know, you don't want to go down that path unless you absolutely have to.
Yeah.
Because it's?
What would be your, oh, Mr. Chairman, may I?
Good, yeah.
What would be your barriers, what would be your hindrances to go down that path? I don't understand. You have one accessway into this project, there's no other upland to get in, correct?
Are you going to be town council for the Conservation Commission proceedings?
Probably.
Yeah, I mean, that's the issue, you know, is that Conservation Commissions don't like to see over 5,000 square feet. It throws you into court, you know, it's not?
Actually, there's a linear exception, linear improvements exception for court, too.
And you don't have a bylaw. So, once you pass limited project, you're passed.
Well, and if we had a bylaw, it'd be dealt with here anyway.
Exactly, so.
So just for background, under the Wetlands Protection Act, there's a 5,000-square-foot wetland fill threshold. If you exceed it, you can't get a permit from the local Conservation Commission, you have to get a variance from DEP. They're almost never granted for projects like this. But what they have is they have an exclusion for projects where your only means of access is through wetlands to get to an upland parcel, just like this. This is a great upland parcel for the development they're proposing. Unfortunately, it's a very narrow sort of section that goes through the wetland. They call that a limited project, because your project has limited access. What they do is, projects like that, they say, well, the impacts that you create getting access to your property doesn't count towards that 5,000 square feet. So you're still allowed the 5,000 square feet on the project side, but you just don't count the section next to the, that is required for the access.
Yeah.
And they are still required to replicate. It's not as if they get a free pass, but so they are required to. So the other part of the limited project is that you can't, you could not have owned property for alternative access that wouldn't go through wetlands. So for example, it's my understanding the applicant owned both houses on the very end of the road on Plymouth, on Plymouth Street. He owned those two lots. So if there was some way that he could have gotten through one of those lots, upland to get to his project, he wouldn't qualify for a limited project. But Sean and I looked at this, and he couldn't use either one of those.
Right, built the houses there, too.
Yeah. So.
Who makes the determination?
The Conservation Commission.
It's a limited project, Conservation Commission makes the determination.
So the applicant has to provide the burdens on the applicant to provide the proper evidence to show that there is no other way in, but other than that?
And the other access, wasn't that private property? Is it private property? The other access that they originally went for?
By the senior center?
Town, I mean.
Town, okay.
Yeah, so that wouldn't count.
Right.
I did, I did think about that, and I don't think, I don't think you could, you could claim that that was valid access, that they had control.
So if we were to ask for more on the width, what would we be asking for? What's a comfortable?
My suggestion would be 24 feet curb-to-curb. And then I think the other changes that they've made are, it's still, it's still an aggressive road, in my opinion, an aggressive roadway section. It's two feet narrower than this, it's still got constrained sides. I still have concerns about whether the geometry that they show is constructable, but I think that two feet would make a big difference. It really gives another foot. What we do is we stripe an edge line that's one foot off the face of curb. It would provide, I think, a little bit more flexibility.
Before we go on, just a couple of additional comments. One of the issues we'll have with limited project here, and this is a gray area. My clients owned, as Amy mentioned, the two A and R lots out front, so normally, in my experience, you can't get a limited project if you've already made use of that parcel, and they've already constructed two, you know, carved out two A and R lots and constructed two houses on it. Maybe yours is different, but I've run up against that with Conservation Commissions. So that's one.
Well, but the difference is, Dan, is that you only do the look-back for access. You don't do the look-back for development. The look-back only goes to, could you have had access?
So in that case, had one of the properties not transited wetlands, and they could have, then they?
Correct, then they could not qualify.
But if both properties have wetlands behind, then, then the limited?
Yep.
Claim stands.
Right. So what Attorney Bailey's saying is that if, so they have those two A and Rs out front, but if this very, the subject lot, if that had a house on it, they couldn't then try and get a development on it in addition to the house, because they already, it's already been developed. But I've never seen where, because, I mean, the look-back goes far. It goes back as far as the property's, as far as the property owner has owned it. So, I mean, if you had the opportunity 20 years ago, and so there's no way they're going to hold you to when you A and R something.
And the premise is still, is to avoid a taking.
Exactly.
Right, so you've got a, you've got a developable upland portion of your property, that the only way you can access it is by executing a wetland fill. So we had a similar project, casino project, where you, the front of the property was developed because they didn't have the issues that they had, you know, that was easier to develop because it had front engine and had access. The back upland area, they really didn't do anything with until someone came along that wanted to spend the money to endeavor to get way back there to this big barge wetland parcel. We didn't have any restrictions by virtue of the fact that the front of it had been developed.
So could this be a situation where we, you know, it's approved based on the submission, but then if they can move forward and get approval on a limited project, then they have to expand the width of the road to such and such feet? You don't mean sort of have it both ways?
No, so what we would do is, since they've already, they've already stated in their letter that they sent to us that they're not continuing any further. So these would all, we would condition the project to 24 feet.
Okay.
And then they would have to submit plans, would say within, I would say, probably, normally my condition would be 30 days prior to a building permit, but because of the changes are going to be significant, because they are insisting on closing, I would say probably 45 to 60 days prior to a building permit being issued. They have to submit plans to us, to the Building Department, to the Engineering. We would send them out to peer review.
Two other comments. I direct your attention to comment 50 in Tetra Tech's letter, which I'll read, and it says, "The project is shown," and this was the original comment, "the project is shown includes over 2,300 square feet of wetland fill that is based on a roadway cross-section that appears to be narrower than likely will be required. We expect actual wetlands fills to be significantly higher, potential to exceed 5,000 square feet, which may require more complex federal and state permitting." So, that's right.
So has the author of that said, it said may, because at the time I wasn't sure?
Mm-hmm.
And I'm still not certain, but that's why we're having the dialogue.
Right.
And the other thing, Sean, can you just point out, you pointed out to me earlier today regarding the zoning provision?
So zoning, 175-47 for entry, entrance and exit points, driveway width shall fall within the following limits. So minimum for multifamily above five dwelling units, minimum's 20 feet, and then maximum's 30. So we're above the minimum, and we're also with a 22-foot wide pavement, we're at what would be for the subdivision rules and regulations for a local roadway. And then?
When you think about five units?
There's no other category.
That much further above five units, I mean, we're at 100 and?
It doesn't say five to 20, five to 30.
I mean, so you're going to have more cars going in and out than five units.
Exactly, right, that's true.
Yeah, and the standard for a local road generally is 400 trips, and they're over that per day. Given the number of units it serves, it's more likely a?
This is not a commercial building, though, this is not a commercial.
It's not, it's not really a drive, it's, I mean, it's an access to a single development, but categories in the zoning are
one to family, one to five-family residential, multifamily above five dwelling units, or commercial and industrial. So we're above the minimum for the category that we are in.
And what is the, what is the width on that?
20 is the minimum.
And the maximum?
30.
What'd you say?
Also, and the other thing, as far as the wetlands go, just, I mean, Army Corps comes into play, too.
That's the minimum.
Yeah, but there are, there are, under the 401 cert, there's a, there's a acceptance for linear improvements, which this would be. So it's a similar, it's a similar exception.
So more traffic, more, more buildings, wider.
Yeah.
Basically.
Right, I think that, I think that, to Sean's point, is that the, it's so narrow when you have two cars, when you have two cars going in opposite directions, and there's nothing on the sides.
Okay.
What's the plan for the striping? Is there going to be striping, even if it's 20 feet? Is it going to be fog line, or is it going to be?
If it's?
A center line?
If it's 22 feet, I wouldn't, I wouldn't stripe a 10-foot lane, no.
20 feet.
So right now, it's 22 feet?
22, I'm sorry, yes, yeah, yeah.
So essentially, if you had a center line, there'd be 11 feet of dimension to each lane. If you wanted an edge line, the edge line would have to be a foot in off the curb, so that would leave you with a 10-foot lane.
So there probably would not be markings if it was a 22?
At 11 feet, I wouldn't ask for them. At two 11-foot lanes, it's kind of a real subtle difference. 12-foot lane is like a standard highway lane. Like a 10-foot lane is, it's like if you go over like the Sagamore Bridge. You know, those are pretty, those are pretty tight.
Right.
So 10 feet small, but passable, 12 feet's pretty much standard.
Do you think a road that distance and with that servicing that many residents should be marked versus not being marked?
I don't anticipate any scenario where there wouldn't be a center line marked. Yeah, the center line would be marked, just not a, not a fog line or an edge line.
We're also not 10 feet, we're two 11-foot lanes, so, you know, to say to mark out two 10-foot lanes or to go to 12, we're, 10 would be narrow, 12 is wide, we're at 11. So, I mean, we're right in there.
So is this, is the definition of this access road truly a driveway, or is it an access road?
It's an access road.
I'm sorry, definitely access road.
But Sean was quoting our definitions of a driveway width. 175-47, Section C is driveway width shall fall within the following limits. Is there a different regulation for a road, or do we, have we not?
That's where it's?
Codified that.
Yeah, that's where I think it's a iffy.
Right, I mean, I think it's, I think it's more than reasonable. You're, even if we went with driveway, the minimum is 20 and the maximum is 30, and?
You're in the low end.
We're looking at 24, and for all of those cars that are in the length of it, I think you're, I think it's more than reasonable.
And remember, too, the driveway dimensions contemplate a, an unconstrained condition, I would say. Typically, you're not going to have a bridge, let alone a 500-foot bridge, as a driveway.
So we don't have anything in there that says about streets?
Well, I read that, too, a local street's 22.
So in the, that's in the subdivision rules and regulations.
Okay, all right. And that's what?
That is the one that, that's 26.
Right here.
It's right here. The minor street detail is 26. 26 paved roadway. And that's, that's from the subdivision rules and regulations.
And the local is 22 feet.
Yeah, I mean, there are arterial roads with a center strip, I mean, there are five different categories, arterials without a center strip, a collector street, a minor street, and a local street. The local street is 22 feet, and that is a street, which is a way that is dedicated or devoted, this is from your zoning bylaw, or devoted to public use by legal mapping and other lawful procedures, public ways, way which the town clerk certifies to maintain used as a public way, way shown as planned proof according to subdivision rules, regulations, and it must meet the following standards, the wider width of 40 feet, a traveled width of 16 feet. So you can have a street in the town of Abington that's only 16 feet wide, so?
Why wouldn't?
No, you wouldn't, or you might, if you had a four-lot subdivision. But, you know, your zoning bylaw allows for 16 feet, your subdivision rules and regulations for a local street, and this is, this is a driveway, it's not a street, but for a local street, allow for 22, and your zoning for driveways has a minimum of 20. So I think we meet what, you know, what's required with 22, or exceeding some of your minimums. And it's only serving one project.
Just to qualify that.
How many units again?
144.
144 units.
So usually the metric that we look at in terms of qualifying between a local street and a, and a minor street is trips. And the threshold, I think it's an even, an actual threshold, is 400 to 500 trips. In both cases, they exceed that. So their average daily trips from this facility are, I think, in the order of 600 or 700. That would be, that would exceed the, sort of, the lowest, what they're referencing is the lowest, to Dan's point, four-lot, 10-lot subdivision. This is the equivalent of realistically 100-lot subdivision. And again, in a constrained environment for an extended length. So those are qualifiers that we consider in terms of establishing what a, wanting to skew us more towards the higher of this?
Rather than lower.
Express scale than the lower, yeah.
Shall we move on?
Yep. Unless you guys have any more questions?
No. So the next one that's open is just a discussion about landscaping, so we tried to sort of develop a discussion about whether the landscaping is appropriate, so they've sort of not provided any information on that, not a big deal. We just think that as part of the final plan, we should condition the approval that they provide a landscape plan as part of the final plan for your review. Item six is just more discussion related to the driveway. So item seven is? Oh, so this was a discussion about the nexus between the two buildings where their main entrances were. And then I just, at the last hearing, it was explained to me that there's going to be a connector at the second level, which to me sort of mitigated a lot of my concern.
Yeah, it's like a bridge going across, is that what you're talking about?
Right, is that, is that true?
Yeah.
So our concern is that, is that the two buildings are pretty tight at that location, and if there's a lot of transaction between the two buildings, then visibility's not great, there's only a four-foot sidewalk that's right against the building for much of it, just looked a little bit tight.
And you still anticipating having that be a two-way street through that where the buildings meet?
Well, I think at the last time, and we had the architectural, that is also a lobby that's glassed in, and I think we would be open, there was discussion, but if that needed to go one way, that wouldn't be, you know, the end of the world.
Okay.
It's my understanding that the majority of the board was in favor of it having gone one way.
Right, we were.
Yeah, we didn't revise these plans because at the last time, we continued to give time for the review, and then we just got these comments last week.
Okay. So it certainly one-way, I don't think there's enough traffic on the lot to be compromised terribly by a one-way circulation through that point. Certainly simplify things and make it easier for people to see things, and also give more width for the sidewalk, so that would be a good, a good solution. What we would want to do is just be careful, you don't narrow it too much, because a firetruck's probably going to want to get through there, so we'll just be considerate of that.
I don't think we talked about narrowing, and I think we just talked about making it go one way.
Well, I, okay, well, you, if you, if it was one-way, you probably wouldn't want to keep it 24 feet wide, but that's, it's your design.
Yeah, look at it, maybe flare it down a little bit, yeah, on each side, yeah.
Most of those have been addressed. Yeah, there was, item number 26, isolator row, that's really just a recommendation to make a more functional system. So in this particular case, 100% of their detention is below grade. So out of sight, presumably out of mind. What happens is silt and sediment, despite our best efforts, are always going to pass through the system and get into the bottom of the infiltration system. The system needs to infiltrate water out into the environment to mitigate its, some of the flows that come into it. Over time, they'll necessarily clog. So the manufacturers of the cul-de-sac system just made this simple detail where they have one initial row that is surrounded by fabric, so it doesn't allow the migration of sediments out that isolator row. Just a recommendation from our stamp, it's going to be their responsibility to maintain it and clean it, and replace it if necessary.
Right.
Just a simple, low-cost modification.
So that isolator row is a storm tech product, which is not what we're specifying. We're specifying the cul-de-sac chambers, which is a different manufacturer, and they don't have that same, they have a different feeder system in between. And it's not as simple as one row. We have two chamber systems that are being fed from either end, so it'll be four rows, and it would be an additional 50 or so chambers that would be added to the system at a substantial cost. The way we have it laid out, we're confident that we're meeting stormwater management policy, we're meeting the pre-treatment, and all of that is required under that. It will have to be properly maintained, but that's part of any system going forward. And that's how, that's our response, I guess, to that.
How often do those systems need to be maintained? I mean, just in general, because I mean, I see?
Well, you sweep the parking lot four times a year, you have to clean the catch basins twice a year, and at the same time, the manholes that feed them would all be, so, you know, regular.
That's maintenance, cleaning the manholes, that's right.
Correct.
And there's going to be a new law coming from the federal government, too, where it has to be maintained better than it has been and documented.
Right.
So, I mean, that's coming into effect, I just went to the meeting the other day. The whole town is basically new construction and everything.
Right, stormwater utilities and things like that.
It's going to be responsibility of the property owner to take care of it even more than they used to.
Correct.
And log it. So it's a big thing coming. So I don't know, your way is easier, or?
No, so this is, this is something we don't really need to discuss anymore.
Yeah, okay.
It's Sean's design, he can do what's appropriate.
Sounds good.
We just feel it's good just to sort of?
All right, very good.
Help the bear a little bit.
All right. Next.
So, okay, so now we're into the water and sewer issue, so typically what we do is, the board's responsibility is primarily to make sure that health and safety, there's no risk to the public health. Usually that revolves around a couple issues, which is firetruck access, traffic. For us, it's water and sewer as well. So if you have inadequate sewer capacity, that's a potential risk to public health. If you have potential impacts to the water system that restricts fire suppression supply to an adjacent property, that's a risk to public health. What we almost always do in request is just? risk to public health. What we almost always do in request is just a letter from a qualified professional, a memo from a qualified professional that sort of lays out the foundational aspects of the project, which is how much water are they going to generate, how much sewer are they going to generate, how much water are they going to need, based on what criteria, usually Title V or some, some version thereof. And then some basic foundational information that assesses whether or not the sewer system, in the water system, can handle it. In this case, the reason why we have a little bit heightened sense of concern is that whenever you're designing the collection system, you're looking at what the future development would be on these properties. So, as far as density figures directly into that, anybody designing the system, the original system that's in the street, wouldn't have forecasted a hundred and some-odd units of multifamily housing on that particular parcel. So, it, from our standpoint, warrants just a little bit of analysis in a two, three-page memo stating kind of the basic facts, so the board has something to rely on. Now, I know they said they've spoken to the DPW director.
Yes.
That's great, too. Those folks have a lot to do. You know, I would like the applicant's engineer to have a statement on the record that informs the board and provides the basis for the board to reach a decision respectful of the commissioner's point or the DPW director's point. Same thing with water, just something on the record from the applicant that lays out the expectations and the basis for determining that. And part of that is, it could be referenced in discussion with the DPW director. That says, you know, to confirm this, there's no history of sanitary sewer overflows, and the DPW director has stated that there's no objection to it. That usually ends the discussion. But it provides a document in the file and in the record that you guys can reference in your findings.
So, you're asking just for a basic acknowledgement and an idea of what exactly they're going to be using on their property?
Right. So, it includes a couple of basic things. One is how many units and what's your expected generation, so that everybody uses the same number, and that we agree it's not four hundred gallons a day, it's something much larger than that. It also addresses whether they have an obligation to offset II, inflow and infiltration as a function of their flow coming into the system. And then it also takes a brief look at what the collecting infrastructure is, what its history is, and what its size is, its slope and its pipe size, and does a quick little, what we call Manning's calculation, to determine what the capacity of the pipe is, and says, well, this project is only ten percent of the capacity of the pipe, then, you know, it's an easy discussion from there. If during that analysis, we find out that it's a little bit closer to capacity than we would feel comfortable with, maybe we do a little bit of extra analysis.
Is it all designed right now, the storage?
No, we haven't designed the pump system yet. That would be later, as it turned, as we get towards the construction phase, that generally wouldn't be done at this point. So, there is an opportunity there to modify and tweak what comes out of the site and when, as well. As far as, I think that, I think you have letters...
We do have letters from, from the sewer department.
And the water, correct.
And from water. But, like you said, there is nothing, calculations...
Yeah, the important point is that if something goes wrong, I'm not sure that we have to rely upon letters from the town, because we are the town. So, we want to rely on a professional engineer, the applicant's professional engineer...
So, you want the figures?
That has stamped a memo saying, "Everything's going to be fine."
On their end?
Yeah. It's not, it's not an outrageous ask, it's normal.
Unreasonable, I think.
No, not at all. It's what we get normally.
Okay, alright.
And, you know, our response is, you know, the town authority responsible for these things has signed off on them. And, I mean, I wasn't part of that process, maybe Sean was, or someone else can speak to it, but I have to believe that, you know, that was, you know, a process that, you know, this water and sewer commissioners or district, I don't know what you have in Abington, but, you know, they looked at it, and they were comfortable that there's adequate capacity.
I think unfortunately, in this situation, you guys are sitting as water and sewer commissioners, because it is a comprehensive permit, so you are, you're issuing everything. And because ZBA, you're not the water and sewer commissioners, you have some backup.
Okay.
So, is there, is there a chance that the Abington and Rockland Joint Water Works letter was based on anticipation, anticipated use of consumption of water, as well as how much sewage was going to be output based on the agreement we've recently signed with, whatever it was, Brockton?
The Brock.
And was sitting there going, alright, so that's fine, but they haven't necessarily addressed...
Calculated it.
Whether the, as you were saying, Sean, the pipes are for that zone or section are at, are near capacity.
And it also doesn't provide any sort of qualitative information to figure where on the spectrum it fits. So, for example, if you had a discharge, a town-wide discharge permit that was capped at a million gallons per day, and you were at nine hundred and seventy thousand gallons per day, and this project was twenty-nine thousand gallons per day, theoretically it fits, right? But, it would be fundamentally different discussion if there were a million gallons a day and the town was at five hundred.
Right.
So, those are the kind of things that we're just trying to put basic information on a piece of paper, stamped by the applicant's representative and engineer, not the town's DPW director, not me. I'm happy to provide it, but I don't think that's our responsibility that, that you can rely on. And then if something happens, it becomes their problem as the applicant for not having done their work, and not your problem as the ZBA for having granted a permit based on information provided by you.
In other words, instead of just building it and figuring it out and adjusting it as you go along?
Right.
I got you. Alright.
And I don't want to be an alarmist on this, I truly don't think there's an issue.
But you just want something that says, more than just, you know...
And at some point, it's going to, it has to be done, because when they design their pump station, they're going to, your pump station adds a lot more sort of range to what you can discharge. You can ask it to pump very few times and pump a lot at one time, or you can ask it to pump several times, a little bit at each time.
Right.
It's largely dependent on what you're discharging to. So, this is all information that they're going, they're going to need anyway, and it's, I think it's prudent foundational information that the board should have to make a decision.
Correct.
Maybe we can cut through this. I mean, I think it's something that can be conditioned. I have, I've got to be honest, it's a little frustrating to go to the water department and have them say, "It's okay", and go to the sewer department, and then you're revisiting and questioning the judgment of the water and sewer department. You know, usually the, this goes the other way around, by the way. You do a huge set of calculations, and the water department doesn't say it's good enough, do some more. And you do another huge set, and you can never get the letter out of them, and then you're trying to decide whether it's good enough without a letter.
So, what calculations were presented?
Well, wait a minute, hold on, hold one second.
What calculations were presented?
I don't know.
Yeah, if there were calculations presented, then there shouldn't be an issue as far as getting us the calculations, right?
Well, on the point, we were asked to, before we started the project, to make sure we had water and sewer. So, we've been on the water board, and we went through it, they said, "We have more than enough water for the project." They took the calculations from what we use from senior housing, basically, and how much they use. So, they said, "We have more than enough water, we'll grant you more." Went to the sewer department, sewer department just got five hundred thousand gallons per day more for the, from...
Right.
They said, "We've got more than enough sewer for it. So, I mean, if you want us to do the calculations, I mean, we'll do the calculations." But both of those boards are bored just like you, and they all said unanimously, "You've got it." So, that's the frustrating part of it, you know? So, we went through those boards months ago, and we went through the sewer, the same thing. I mean, and I understand what he's saying. If it's this much, but it's not...
But also, also it's to avoid anecdotal discussions about approvals and qualifications, it's really just to put it...
Put it right in.
And then, if it's true, everybody just says, "Yeah, and it's done."
The board said, "Yes, we have plenty of storage."
Was there a similar...
I understand what they said, and that's what we have asked.
Okay, alright.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think, I might, I think I missed something. He said that there were calculations from senior housing?
Excuse me?
You said that there were calculations from senior housing, a different project? Because this is senior housing.
No, Abington has senior housing.
So, and you, so you used an existing project?
Excuse me?
Did you use an existing project for your calculations?
Yes.
Got it, okay.
So, Sean Carpenter, Shamrock Development, if I could just add to this, Abington, Rockland Joint Water Works takes your, you know, memorandum from us, which we provided to them, and they run a model of their own calculation, almost exclusively dismissing whatever we say. If we say we're going to use forty gallons per day, or even whatever, it doesn't matter. They use their own calculation, which is why you have to go back to two successive meetings. They're also an independent agency, independent of the towns they work. So, the water has to be done separately, on my understanding. As far as the sewer is concerned, they also run their own model, as required by, you know, the excessive gallons that they, that they receive from Brockton. We're running this through on another project, and we've gone through this process, and their calculations are, regardless of what we provide, that's what they provide. So, you know, I don't know what our numbers will do to change anything, because their numbers are probably higher anyway.
Alright, so, closing it to the floor, I didn't really open up to the floor, I just wanted to hear Mr. Little's points. I mean, when we look at, we look at the fire hydrants, you didn't even have those on the, on the plans, you had one fire hydrant.
No, we have four. We talked about that.
Yeah, you do now, but I was...
Last meeting we had it.
That's right, but before that, you only had one hydrant on the, on the plans. I mean, I mean, this is why we question. It's why we question things. What were you going to say?
Just, so if the sewer department and the water department have run calculations, why can't you review those calculations and pass those on to us? What would be the...
They did run the calculations.
Well, that's what, he just said they did.
They were just, they were saying that from what we have, you know, normally, the normal flow of the water and sewer.
But Glenn, that's not what he just said. He just said they...
Yes, he did. You're right, you're right.
You provided them with figures, but they come up with their own figures and do their own calculations.
They run them all and make an approval, but they don't provide us with the detail.
Okay, well...
That's how they do it on the other...
Okay, alright. That's enough from the floor, please. So, good point.
Yeah, we can condition that.
Alright, okay. Anything else?
So, an offshoot of that is the II discussion. In almost all towns that have sewer systems, they have inflow and infiltration issues, where sewer systems are designed to handle wastewater, the water that goes down your toilet, goes down your shower. Unfortunately, many systems get a lot of other water, either from groundwater or from people's sump pumps, that take away the capacity in a, in an operating system. So, DEP has mandated that in towns that have II issues, that new projects exceeding fifteen thousand gallons per day, which this project would be, are required to offset their new flow on a four-to-one, that means for every new gallon of flow that they're adding to the system, they need to reduce inflow and infiltration in the system by four gallons. So, as part of this memo, there would be a quick discussion on whether or not they have an II obligation and what they're going to do to pay it, if they, if they have it. And I don't know if there's been any discussion at all about inflow and infiltration. Sean, Dan, do you know?
None that I know of.
And do we know for a fact it would be more than fifteen thousand gallons per day? Based on the size of the...
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Do you disagree that this comes into play, or...
I don't know what's customary in Abington. I mean, every town is a little different. I live in Westwood, and we have a new pipe system. We don't require II from developers because we don't have any place to do it. I mean, it's fortunate, because it's only a thirty-year-old system. You know, you go to Quincy, you know, there are holes this big in the pipes, so...
For example, in Framingham, sixteen dollars per gallon per day. So, if you have thirty thousand gallons per day, it's, it's three hundred, four hundred eighty thousand dollar fee. So, and the ranges are huge. So, to Dan's point, some towns have very little II problems and very little requirements, but other towns, a little bit different spectrum. Again, that's information that we'd like to know.
Okay. No, no.
We talked a little bit briefly on item number thirty-six about lighting plans and landscape plans. It was clear at the last meeting that the applicant was working diligently with the neighbors, and was comfortable that that was going to work itself out. When it did, it just needs to be shown on the plans, the final plans. Oh, the traffic impact assessment. So, all of our questions were answered.
Okay.
They were sort of answered in a random way, just sort of figures responding to our questions that have the same figure numbers as different figures in the report. So, we had just asked for the original report to get modified, and the changes made in the report reissued. What we got was a title page, the responses to comments, the original report, just all put together. So, I, and this is, maybe I'm being persnickety, but it would be nice if we just had a report, a single report, that's the traffic and impact assessment, that incorporated the comments and the changes that were made, rather than having a series of sort of somewhat conflicting information. So, for example, we have one figure, that's figure six. It's, there's another figure six in the report that are two totally different figures, because one was figure six of the response to comments, but they look identical. So, what we were hoping is that just for the purposes of just consolidating all the information, we could just get that done.
We will do that.
Okay, thank you.
Just put a condition, and we'll do that.
Okay.
We had a brief conversation about snow storage. So, I looked at it again, and they have, they have a lot of area when you figure with the, the area under the high-tension wires, so I'm pretty comfortable that they can deal with it, because I think it's healthy that everybody understands the restrictions that they have. They shouldn't be dumping it in the wetland, so that we have a common expectation as to what's going to happen, that's all. So, I'm not terribly concerned about that, so we can just condition it to the approval, say whatever you need it to say.
Sean, can you go back to number forty-two? You had an issue with that one as well.
Oh, yeah, we were just asking for a few backup calculations. So, this is a little bit outside of my lane. I have traffic engineers that specialize in this information, and there was a standard way of evaluating traffic and distribution patterns, and they used a different one, and just sort of presented the findings. Although we didn't disagree with them, we wanted the backup information that was the reason for it. Not, if, it's just, it's included as part of the revised document, that's fine. Or even something like that would be something we would be fine if it was just given to us directly.
Okay.
Item number fifty-two, again, this is more along the lines of just having common expectations. So, I, the site's big, the site's got more than enough room for it to mobilize equipment and to park contractors, so, you know, in comparison to some more urban fortyBs that literally have no space on the site left, I think there's adequate space. It's more of just be something to create a vision of, for the board of what's supposed to happen, how it's supposed to be run, so that if, in fact, they get trucks queuing on the street, or they put a construction trailer right in someone's backyard, we have a little bit of understanding as to how it's going to be managed.
Okay.
And that could be part of the final...
Yeah, I mean, that would normally be something we do, you know, prior to construction.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, cut and fills. So, I think that we, I don't know if we resolved this or not, I don't remember, but...
The last meeting, I had said we had done a grid calculation and done a cut-fill, and it was a net of sixteen thousand, seven hundred ninety-five of a fill, but I also said that excluded, these buildings have basements, and in the meantime, I had done that, so that the basements are an additional seven thousand cubic yard of a cut, basically.
So, you're less than ten thousand yards of fill?
We're less than ten thou, yeah.
So, I, it would be nice to have that information, because what that does is it tells you, there's no massive movement of materials either off the site or on the site.
Yeah, it's a net of seven thousand.
Yeah, that's, that's modest. And just for reference, we have a project in Noah Falk that's started... And just for reference, we have a project in Noah Fork that started a million and a half yards of export. So that was, that was considerable.
Wow. And, and that's something we've included as part of the construction management plan.
Perfect.
Yeah, yeah, that's usually where you see it.
Oh, and the last issue is, is fire truck access. So we had some concern based on the geometry and, and the way the access was, or the way the parking was configured, and the fact that there was, it seemed that the focus of the chief's comments was that, that central turnaround. It wasn't quite obvious to us how a truck would get around the back, or how it would get from the emergency access around the corner to the, to the, to the, to the circle. So what we asked for is what's traditionally provided by the applicant as a fire truck turning plan. Frankly, we, we just did it ourselves, and we figured out that it would fit. I'd still love it to be provided by the applicant, but originally our, my concern was that it wouldn't fit and wouldn't get around. But it, it does get through the site, it stays within the, the drive aisles. So, yeah, I'm pretty comfortable that a, a truck's going to be able to circulate around the site. I'd still like a plan from them, but I think that's it.
That's it? Amy, you got anything, or?
No.
You have anything else? Guys, anything? Alright, so, I'm going to open it up to the floor. Again, once at a ti, one at a time, name and address. Does anyone like to speak?
I think that's roughly the number, I, I'm not sure exactly the number, I can find it for you though.
But that's what you're saying, there's going to be 600 trips coming in and out of that road, up and down Central Street, over the course of the day.
Yes.
Correct. And just to be clear, a trip is half of a, of a, of a journey. So, so if you, if you go somewhere, there's one trip leaving and one trip coming back.
Okay.
600 coming out, I think it's something coming in and going out. And on my own calculation, I think in 144 units, it's 288 cars, probably, so it's 288 cars coming out every day and going back in, so.
Yeah. But you might have vans going in there too, food trucks, deliveries.
288 times two is?
Anybody else?
So, Mr. Chairman, I was wondering what happened with the, the Butters, the two prop, the two houses at the very end, there was going to be, there was a discussion about screening, has anything been, has, is there anything definite?
Is there anybody here from them, that else?
Was there any screening proposed or anything?
Well, Glenn and I were talking, and we were trying to, you know, make a plan of what we were going to be putting to try to block in. The last meeting, I brought up the land going down and it being filled and my fence being lower. I haven't heard back, so I don't know. He did offer to fill in, but I haven't heard anything more from that, if that's what you're asking.
I thought it was, I thought we determined that it wasn't going to be lower, right?
No, it's going to be lower, I think was, was.
I mean, it'll be lower, but it won't be lower than the road, right? I mean, it's a gradual, it's the gradual slope. So you haven't, you haven't decided on any kind of vegetation or anything that you're providing?
Well, yeah, I had, so I had a landscape architect draw for both houses. Actually, two both houses, one across the street. I've met with everybody for an extensive amount of time. I think we're pretty comfortable. I said to Linda, I mean, you know, and I don't know, and I already said this in the board, I mean, it's, it's not something, I understand our obligation to, to Linda and the other neighbors up there. It's not something that we're trying to, to keep hold on, assure, you know? And I said to Linda, basically, whatever you want to, to make things easier, as far as that, then, then I'm good with. But yes, I have a drawing done by ourselves in Kane, that Linda has actually chose to make some alterations to. The couple on the left-hand side were good with what they had, but I'm willing to do, and I, I said to Linda, I mean, she wanted some rocks to prevent people from, you know, or, or some sort of stationary planting so that somebody couldn't like enter on, fine with that, out of worry.
So, so how do you guys want to address that? We don't have to decide tonight, but at some, do, do you want to have any kind of approval of the screening? Or do you just want to let them, do you want to let them do it amongst themselves? And I, I've done it both ways with these kind of projects. I've done, I've done a condition where the applicant has to come back to show the board a, a screening plan and that the board is happy with it. And then there's also been situations where the Butter and the-
They work it out?
Just work it out themselves. It, it sounds, in this situation, it sounds like they, they more than likely would work it out themselves.
Do you feel comfortable with that, or?
Pretty much, but I have, you know, I have my fears about this road being just too close to property.
So, so perhaps we could, I mean, we are conditioning that they submit a, a full landscaping plan. In addition to the landscaping plan, they can submit the plans they already have?
That'd probably be a good idea, just to make sure that everybody's happy with it, I mean.
I think we've seen-
Glenn's work, isn't it?
Yeah, we know Glenn and the LePointes' work. We know that from a number of meetings ago, they agreed to switch the, the crosswalk over to benefit you, correct ma'am?
Sidewalk, yeah.
That's, I'm sorry, excuse me, the sidewalk to again give you added buffer.
Right.
You know, I'm comfortable with you folks working it out, just having seen this gentleman work for my number of years on the board.
And I feel the same, it, just at the end, what we'd like to have is a, a plan as part of the-
Yeah, yeah, maybe include that.
Not this plan, that, that shows-
I'll sit against you guys, just to have-
Just include that in as part of the final landscape plan or something like that.
And one of the things too, is sometimes through coordination, that things come into the landscape that other, that might not be a great idea, like for example, sometimes, she referenced rocks. Sometimes a rock can get put in a space that just, it's a bad location, or it impacts visibility or something like that, that we'll catch that and be able to say, well, could you move it? So it's a, it's just to avoid potential kind of miscommunications as well.
Okay.
One thing you learn in the years of looking at plans is things look different in real life than they do on paper.
Right. Okay, anybody else? Are we all set with the floor? Okay, I'm closing to, back to the board. Amy, you got anything?
I don't think I do. Sorry. No, I don't, thanks. So, so, Mr. Chairman, I would, I would suggest the board close the hearing, and then we can discuss when, when we're going to meet next.
And, and that meeting will be to?
That meeting will be to, I will draft, I'll draft a decision with Sean's help and come, come back to this board with that. We will then deliberate on that, you will deliberate on that.
Okay.
I will present it to you, and you will deliberate on that.
Alright.
So we have 40 days. So if you close it tonight, we have 40 days.
Okay, does everyone feel comfortable closing the meeting?
And, um, just, just as you know, once you close it, no other information can be accepted at all.
Okay. Alright, y'all. Everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, because I know you let it, said that, so, alright, anyone make a motion?
Make the motion to close the hearing on the petition of Abington Investments LLC 2405 Central Street for comprehensive permit under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40B.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, pass.
When are we, when are we showing up again?
Okay, so you guys, we have, we have up until May, the end of May, so I need time.
Okay.
Did you say 45 days?
Forty.
Forty days.
So, um. You don't want to do your regular meeting in May, correct? Which was, which, what would be your regular meeting?
Second Thursday.
To the night?
Night.
We could do the 16th of May, it has to be filed on the 19th, which is a Monday, so the 16th is a Thursday, so it would have to be, um-
19th is a Sunday.
Oh, sorry about that, then it would be the 20th, which would be the money, with the Monday, so.
So you would have to write it, and you would have to sign it?
I'm writing everything.
Okay.
Nancy gets a break.
It's your lucky day.
So, do you, do you want to have a 20?
I only have one thing for that meetup.
For May 9th?
Well, we're pretty much staying away from our regular meetings, but-
But I mean, it's not like a, a hearing here.
It's not.
Okay, what do you guys think?
That's fine, ma'am.
Is that going to work for the May, the May meeting?
That's good, because then if we have, if there's any issues and we need, we can go back, we can come back on the 16th if we have to.
Okay, that sounds good.
That's a good idea.
Everyone in favor of that?
Yep.
Alright, good, so we'll go for that.
It's May 9th at 7:00.
Mm-hmm, yeah, that sounds fine to me.
Four, seven, what do you have?
7:05.
What's the first one? It's a long one or anything?
An in-law.
Yeah, okay.
And existing, they're just-
Okay, so we do them first and then get them out of here?
We'll do you guys second, because it's an in-law head, so it's a, have a nice take.
Oh, and you don't need to specify a time anyway, because it's not about the hearing.
Yeah, because, I mean-
Yeah, we'll do them first.
It's not a hearing.
Okay, well, Amy's going to be here too.
Yeah. I'll be here for your whole meeting, don't worry.
Alright.
For May 9th.
For May 9th. Okay, we good?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. You can shut that off, we'll close the meeting first.
Make a motion, right?
Yep.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we're all set.